Our work session, this is the work session for September sixteenth. And we have council is all present, the mayor will be joining us shortly. To start off with the work session, we're gonna have, and I don't know, should I just turn the time over to Mandy? Who will give us the explanation of the greatness that is in our presence today. I see a lot of very beautiful blue, I also see some people that I just adore. And very accustomed to winning, the group that's here right now. So please, just please come on up and explain and introduce us to this team in blue. With, with large medals.
Okay, so we don't really get a lot of state champs in our Little League programs. So, we are going to recognize them because Spanish Fork does, so you know what, so are we.
Yes, and we're gonna record this and send it to them.
They're already mad at me because I sing the National Anthem before the game, they're like, why are you trying to make this cool? Cause it is cool, but no, so. I don't know if you guys know how UBBA works, but we break up into different, you know, we have a lot of people all throughout the county. Some down in Mantai and Ephraim area, and so there's four total Mustang tournaments. So for third and fourth graders, I host one of them, so Pleasant Grove hosted one this year. And we won in our city, so we are the Pleasant Grove. And to make it even sweeter, they're the Dodgers, how could that, I mean, could that have been any better?
Perfection.
For me, anyway. So, okay, come on up, I want you to, guys, tell your name.
My name's Logan Bond.
Nice.
A position.
A bond.
Can we get, let's get your position, Logan.
I play mostly third base or outfield.
Nice.
Okay, and one really quick, sorry, one of their games, they were, were you guys down or tied or something? And he got up and hit and hit a couple runs in, and it was awesome. It was so awesome. Yeah, yeah.
I'm Colby Johnson, and I play left field mostly.
Nice.
Nice, cool.
I'm Zachary Shepherd, and I normally played pitcher and first base.
Nice.
I'm Luke Rensler, and I play catcher.
Nice.
And he also had a hit that got some runs that got us winning, it was awesome.
Uh, my name's Mick Jones, and I play second base and shortstop.
Nice, very cool.
Wonderful, and we'd love to have the coaches introduce themselves.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we need the coaches to.
And if they could tell us what position they played when they were in the third grade.
I'm Quentin Wilson, and I'm just a proud coach of the Dodger team here. There are seven that are not here that played remarkable baseball, but just as a funny story. After the very first practice, Ryan and I got together and we thought, well, we might win a couple games. And, you know, be competitive, because we're gonna make sure that the kids played good baseball. But a miracle happened, and not only did we win a couple, but we went twenty and oh.
Oh, nice.
Which is hard to do.
It is hard, that is hard to do.
Yeah.
In any sport, at any age.
Yes, but it was really a miracle season for these young guys.
Oh, this makes me so happy.
Well done.
All right, Ryan.
I am Ryan Jones, I helped Quinn out, lucky enough to have him as my father-in-law, so it's such a blessing to have him for our kids. And then especially for these kids. But just like my son, I played second base and shortstop all throughout my life. Played baseball through college, and this is the only year that I have ever been a part of such a wonderful season. So twenty and oh, had probably more losing seasons in my career than winning ones. So to see these boys work so hard and have so much success was just amazing, and just so fun to do it here in PG.
Ryan, did you say you played college baseball?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that, for what college?
Yeah, I played at Utah Valley.
Oh, I didn't know that, that's awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, because the Wiltons and Jones, they're not competitive.
No.
And the DNA of them combined is now clearly evident. This should be a basketball player.
Yes, Mike Shepherd. I have to bend over, so I played power forward and center in college.
Me too.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Awesome, so I played for three different colleges, Utah Valley State College, one's a junior college. Odessa Junior College, and then University of San Diego, but I was so fortunate, had my son who was lucky enough to be picked up on the team. And then I was just gonna be a spectator and just watch. And I showed up to the first practice, and when you see a coach all dressed up in a baseball uniform, you know he knows what he's doing. And everything, and I was like, this is awesome, and after a few practices, I was like, I don't know if I can coach kids, because I'm loud. Yeah, so anyways, but it was good.
Wonderful.
Awesome.
All right, Matt, go on up.
I'm Matt Rensler, my son is Luke, and a great father-in-law as well, married Aubrey over there. I played basketball, but I only held the stick while they came up to bat, so.
And he did a great job on it, too.
Clearly.
That's pretty much all I.
Award-winning stick.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you.
Awesome.
Well, did you wanna say anything?
I just wanted to say, I, we have, obviously you can tell the coaches, like, how amazing they are. I think they, if they didn't have a game, they were practicing somewhere, and I love that, and, and you know Steve's coaching either tonight or tomorrow. You guys have coached, you know, our, our programs just flat out would not run if we didn't have our volunteer coaches. And so, we're grateful for coaches that take time and interest in these kids and, and take them to a championship, so. Thank you for having us and letting us introduce any pitchers.
Absolutely.
If I'm not mistaken, this is the thirtieth anniversary of the Sandlot, you guys are the real-life Sandlot.
Yes, they really are.
You guys are, so congratulations.
Guys, come stand, come stand right up here, guys. Coaches, get on in there, come on.
Yeah, yeah, come right here in the middle.
And also thanks to Mandy as well, she does a fabulous job.
Oh, you're, you're. Okay, I'm gonna get in one, let me take, yeah, you need, you were coaching, get in there, Aubrey.
No, closer, closer.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, there we go.
Okay, one, two, three, okay, everyone give me a number one. Yeah, all you guys too, come on. Okay, let me do that again, so you're not Robert here, one year, awesome.
Thanks for being here, guys. Great year.
Actually, we'll accept you back next year.
That's right, that's right.
And I do wanna, was the Dodgers just assigned, or was that chosen? Cause I'm a Southern California Dodger.
You were assigned.
Okay, but hopefully that the.
Cause we do drafts, and so, coaches will move up or quit or whatever, and then I'll have openings. So, you know, I don't, I don't let the Yankees or the Padres or Houston in my leagues.
Well done. But, and I just wanna add that the concept of team that is taught, playing ball with friends, continues. Like, I am in situations my entire life where I am on a team, whether it's at home, family, work. So of all the lessons I learned growing up playing ball, it is the concept of team, so, well done. All right, we will get going with staff business, and I, I feel like shaking it up, but I don't even know how to shake that up. It's like, there's, we have six people here to shake up. Neil, let's go first, because we rarely hear from you.
Timer.
Uh-oh.
Oh, we got a slideshow coming?
No, 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 no. I just wanted to update on some of the projects that we've got going on, we're getting near the end. But it never ends, because we have started on next year's projects in the planning phase. We try to get those out to bid, but I just wanted to give a quick update on some things. And we continue, as you guys are also seeing, there's a lot that happens before stuff comes to you. So, property that is developing isn't a perfect twenty-acre piece on a gentle slope with connections at both ends. There's some challenging parcels that come up, and those sometimes come with challenging solutions. And so, and so those are continually on our minds. With engineering and with staff doing investigating and going out and looking, and that's holds true with, with next year's projects. We, we send out Robbie and McLean and say, gosh, this storm drain, we don't know where it goes or what it does. And we send them out on a, on a three-hour tour that turns into Gilligan's Island of a few days of, of seemingly on the island of no return. So, so that's always a continuing effort that goes on with our, our systems. But as, as I've reported on in the past, we have some large projects wrapping up. The Channel of the Lake is pretty much done, we're, we're just finalizing that. Huge storm drain outfall for our city, the AF diversion structure. Once the irrigation seasons end in mid-October, we'll finish up that with the meters. That's going to allow us to actually understand meter and regulate flow that comes out of American Fork Canyon. Legacy project, hundred years, and, and, and ten million dollars, both, both those two projects. Where fifteen twenty west is an ongoing project, where the whole street's torn up, a lot of utilities. Just a reinvestment in our infrastructure, gonna pave here in the next couple of weeks and wrap that up. Twenty-eight hundred north is a storm drain up off of nine hundred west, just starting that one, actually. Same contractor got that, that got another one, and so they're finishing up fifteen twenty, and then gonna shift crews. Get that paved before the wind, or before the summer, or summer ends. Wind Song and Murdoch, that, that is wrapped up, and, and because we paid for a brand-new road. We want a brand-new road that rides like a brand-new road, so we're just finishing up, there might be a little grinding that needs to happen and some things there. Up on fifteen fifty east, there's a project, and we're gonna pave that first week of October as well. Five hundred east, as you know, long distance, we got that repaved, we did a lot of streets again, maintenance. All wrapping up, the Boulevard well, we've talked about, for going on ten years now. And we are just wrapping that one up, because we added an emergency generator to that as well. To provide emergency water in the case of a significant power outage. That's another part of the project to create resiliency and redundancy in our infrastructure. We added that generator at the rec center that is now fully operational and functional. All these things just are, are on our, our to-do list. We are almost finished up with the PI meter project, that'll wrap up here very soon. We've got about, maybe just over half that are imported into our billing system. And we'll get that fully operational here in the next few months as well, big, big, you know, ten-million-dollar project. What I've just said there represents about fifty million dollars of work invested into our community. We've got eight hundred north that's on the, the planned list for next year, going from thirteen hundred west down to North County Boulevard. And six eighty west, right there in front of that quick quack, really rough road, rough, rough road. And, and that's just our commitment that we're gonna make into our, our infrastructure. Few other roads up on the east side of Pleasant Grove that we're, we're working on right now as well. Four thousand north, I'll give you an update on that. I mentioned that the estimate is more than what it started out as, the concept was created in twenty twenty. So prices, things just have ballooned. There was a mag meeting to get the final budget approved that got canceled and delayed last week. So I don't know if that's been rescheduled, I think Eric, you were planning to attend that in the mayor's stead, but I don't know if they'd rescheduled that. Yeah, I haven't heard that they have either. But as soon as we get the full go-ahead on that, we feel like plans are at ninety-five percent, wrap up some property issues there, bid and build that next spring. Bid it, bid it soon, build it next spring. Outside of that, there's gonna be another roadway project next year as well. And then we've got Main Street lighting that is under full consideration, and Battle Creek parking lot that is moving forward in design. So, those are the projects, those are the fun things to talk about, those are the things that are moving our community forward and our reinvestment. Again, Public Works is an operating engine that continues to purr, and, and it's a three sixty-five, twenty-four-seven deal. To make sure that everybody has access to those utilities. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have one. Oh, did you have some? So on those generators, are you storing the, where are you storing the fuel for that?
They'll be with, with that, so we'll have to run those, we'll run them about once a month, and we'll change out the fuel and keep that fresh.
So the fuel will be stored in the, with the generator onsite?
Yes.
Okay.
The Battle Creek parking lot, is that the Kiwanis parking lot?
Yes, yeah, at the top of two hundred south.
That's being repaved, correct?
We are doing a full design on that to expand it, provide opportunities for increased single cars and horse and truck trailer.
When's the estimated completion on that?
Probably next summer. We are aiming for about Memorial Day. All that depends on design, bid, and then construction conditions for that, that's what we're aiming for. We think, we think that's a good timeframe and doable.
Okay.
Mayor Protam, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, and now, on the PI system, are we still in just a gathering information phase for this next year? Or, once everything comes online, are we, I've had people ask me, just.
Yeah, so, so we're, we're in the, first of all, we need to make sure that it is fully implemented into our billing software. And the opportunity exists for everyone to get the data from their individual meter, that's our first goal and step. And, and we're about halfway, just over halfway there, into getting the data to talk with our billing software. And then once we do that, we'll gather sample data for, for the, the individual homes and different sizes. We'll put that into some information, then bring some information back to you for next year. So there's, there's nothing planned this year at all in that.
Same, same app, same software that we access to culinary.
That is correct, that sampling that we did, Badger, Eye on Water is the app that it's called.
Thank you, yeah.
All right.
We're, we're excited to get that data into the people's hands.
I had a couple of questions, I, I didn't, what about, we had some downtown projects with the lighting, are you?
Yes.
So, one of the, we had a meeting with the downtown, and we're kind of coming, you know, we have this consultant who's coming up with some, some ideas with some targeted areas, maybe that, that's kind of the goal. When are we anticipating starting the downtown lighting project, and kind of what's the timeline on that? We, we wanna make sure, whatever we do, kind of jives with the overall view that we have long-term for downtown, so.
We, we have given the contractor the go-ahead to order the, the lights, and they're on order for about December first. That would be the earliest we'd be able to start constructing and getting those installed. Probably not for this Christmas year, I mean, just frankly, getting those in and ordered in that timeframe. And, and we, we put in the request for the information right when the budget was approved, actually. But if the, when you, you say the downtown projects, are you talking about the, the planning side of that?
Yeah, the, the, the mag consultant that we were able to, to get, and we're kind of in the process of, I don't, I don't see, I know he's not here, is he? But, well, Scott was there, but we talked about, we just wanna make sure that, like, are they gonna have to replace the bases for these new poles, do you know? Are they gonna be able to just put them on the same?
I don't know yet.
Secure them the same way?
I'm not sure, and I don't know that we know what the bases look like currently, and so until we kind of dig those up. But I, I think we should, I mean.
Well, so, in my mind, the lights were something we talked about before we engaged with the consultant. I would suggest we just follow through with the lights and implement that into whatever we're doing with the consultant. I think the lights were something we would want regardless.
Well, I agree, I think the placement of them maybe, and, and that kind of stuff, I, I just wanna make sure that the vision that we receive from the consultant considers the project that we're doing with the lights, and how that is interacting with kind of our overall long-term goals for the downtown.
Yeah, I mean, I think the consultants can be more focusing on individual properties as opposed to kind of the ambiance and the lights and things like that. So, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have the consultant up and running in time to make any sort of discussion or decision on where we're gonna, or how we're gonna do the lights. We could always postpone the light project, I just, I think we just put the lights in and we work around it as far as the, I think that's a very minimal part of what we're doing with the consultant.
Yeah, well, I agree, I just, what I don't wanna have happen is if we wanna do some sort of bump out or some sort of change in parking downtown, because that's something that was talked about.
Yeah.
I don't wanna have to move any lights that are put in, especially if we're resetting bases, because they're a different type of.
Have we selected the consultant?
More or less, yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I would suggest, and we certainly can just sit down with them and show them what we have planned and.
I think, if it's December one, I think that they'll be engaged by then, so at least.
I mean, what the consultant's gonna do is six months to a year, and what they're gonna do is gonna be in conjunction with meeting with the stakeholders, and so.
Well, they're gathering information too, they're in the first phase, so I think making sure that our contractor engages them with the information about what's happening with the lights, so that.
I just don't think the consultant's gonna be in a position in the next three months to say, here's kind of how we wanna have our downtown. Because I, I think we're six months at least, maybe a year before the consultant's gonna come back and say, here's how we, we should do the parking, here's how we should do these types of things.
I mean, the RFP said that they were gonna deliver, all of their deliverals and all of the phases would be ten months.
Yeah.
So I, again, I think that, I appreciate that, because I don't wanna delay the lights.
Yeah.
But I do think that the consultant should have the information upfront, and if they're not, the lights aren't arriving by December one anyway, I'm not sure we're.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, we can do some coordination there.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem to, to keep the consultant in the loop.
I just wanna make sure you're aware, Neil, that, that, that information kind of going back and forth will be helpful. Because I agree, Scott, I don't think we need to move them or change them, but I want them to know where they're going.
Yeah.
So that when they develop their plan, they're aware that there's a construction project going on.
Yeah, that should be fine.
How hard is it for you to get a cost of, let's say you have to remove them or put them in a new spot?
Put them in a new spot, yeah, I, I don't wanna say that it's not a, a big deal, it's, but it's, in terms of, if they had a different plan. Moving them into a bulb out or something is not a catastrophic cost or.
The power's there, you just gotta move the power to the new location.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not too bad.
In my mind, I'm not super concerned that that's gonna upset really anything we're doing downtown.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think it'll upset it, I just wanna incorporate it into the discussion.
We just, it's a communication thing, we'll make sure that's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Winterton.
All right, Chief?
There's two.
Let's go Chief Drew.
Unamas.
One of them has to go pick up Taco Amigo, so we gotta.
Wait, which one is picking up Taco Amigo?
Chief Brown.
Chief Brown is gonna go pick up food?
He probably better go first.
Let's have Chief Brown go first.
He has to leave right now.
Oh, he has to leave right now, we'll get you later. Nothing more important.
I was gonna go with him, go get peach shakes for me and Chief Brown, but. Well, I figured go get the food, get something out of it.
If you're quick, if you're quick, you can run.
Yeah, I know.
I'm texting Taco Amigo staff right now.
Exactly, exactly. Fire Department, we're just kind of plugging along, just, just busy keeping up with stuff. Well, next month, we're gonna have a fire safety little, uh, thing at the station, I don't even know what day it is now, I just drew a blank on me.
Like a class or?
No, it's just kind of for, we do it for school-age kids, just, um, we did one last year at the same time. Just because October's Fire Safety Month, and so we just, we'll do like a little three, I'll have a trailer out there, we'll have one of the guys dress up and sparky the dog and do that kind of thing. We'll have some popcorn, a few things that they can look at coloring books, and the kids can look at and do a little fire safety tips for the kids and stuff like that, so. I'll get, I'll get in the newsletter, we've got, we'll, we'll get it out there to you guys, it's gonna be on, if I even got on my calendar yet, or we just, we've been talking about it for a while, and I don't know if I put it on here yet.
Chief, do you need any help, like volunteers or anything like that?
To be sparky?
Not me, not me.
We usually get the new guy to be sparky, you know?
But, but like, so my daughter's in the EMT class up at the high school, and I'm sure a lot of that class would love to, if you needed help, would love to.
If there's interest, like, you know somebody, go and have them contact us, and there's no reason, we'll, we'll take whatever we can, if it's good for them, they wanna come out and do something. But usually, we just have just some, we get a trailer from the state that comes down, then kids crawl through, they learn what the smoke does, they jump out a window, and they do a few things like that. So it's kind of, just kind of a get-together, get with the community and do a few things like that, so it'll be a, it'll be a fun little activity, but it's worked out great for the past, um, uh, couple of years that we've done that. And I'm drawing a blank on the date, I'm, I feel bad, I shouldn't have known, I had it on there, but I think I don't, didn't put it on here yet.
That's right.
But we'll get that out to you guys, and that, things are going great, just moving along, you know, last week was kind of a.
Emotional.
Not, not a great week, you know, type of thing, but we had two of our guys down there, two of our paramedic, they're on the SWAT team, they were down there for, you know, a day and a half, kind of helping out that stuff. And so, a little hectic for a little while, but, you know, got things taken care of, and everything's working out great, and they're doing good, so. Other than that, that's pretty much about all I have, and like I say, we do, one quick thing, we do have our, our new inspector that we have, a part-time.
I met him.
Hired, he, he's been kicking up, we've been getting fifteen, twenty extra inspections a week right now, so he'll, we'll catch up on all these inspections that haven't been done for quite a while with our, not having enough man and stuff. But this is gonna work out good for us and catch up on a few things, get some of these, you know, restaurant hoods and, and springing the systems caught up to get them up to date and make sure they're working properly.
Scott something, and he.
Yeah, Nagel, yeah, good guy.
He also part, he works for.
Springville, he's Springville part-time, yeah, he's been in the fire service for quite a while, so he's very knowledgeable, knows his stuff, he's a good guy.
And very personable, it was very nice.
Yeah, he's a real good guy, so we, we came out real good with him, so we're excited, and we're just kind of plugging along, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, David?
Nothing for me today.
All right, Dion?
I don't have a lot, I just wanted to thank all the people that came out on the day of service, we had eleven projects and they all turned out awesome. So they did a great job, I asked Lisa to do a post on our webpage, letting them know we appreciate it, and just, pretty much that's it. So Saturday was busy, we had that and the Berserker, Berserker went over really well. I'll let Megan talk about that, that was her thing, but it was a cramped.
Not here.
I know, it was, it was just crammed, it was, I mean, they had the core set up all over the, the interior of the park, and we had soccer going. It was, that park was packed, there was still parking, but it was, it was a pretty cool event. I didn't stay very long, but it went really well, so.
Wonderful.
A lot of people, there was a lot of people.
Yeah, so, that's all I had.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to mention, I got kicked off of Cook Family Park.
Perfect.
It's closed, but we were playing soccer on the field, but I thought the fields were open, and we almost got kicked off the fields.
One is above the law.
Was you on that Monday night?
Yeah, I think they called you.
Yeah, it's like, no, soccer's still going good.
Yeah, so we, I was allowed to just keep playing soccer.
Okay.
I was, I, we just were asking about the bathrooms, and we got, we got kicked off, so that was okay.
Yeah, the bathrooms were closed, we had a couple porta-potties there later on in the week.
I'm glad we have people doing their job down there.
Well, I thought, I told my people to not go play, because I thought the fields were closed.
Yeah, that's why I had an open field, thank you. It's all good.
All right.
Well, we could've played you, and we, we would've beat you. All right, Sherry?
I think everybody needs to walk on music.
Don't encourage me.
Yes.
You could.
If you were inclined.
I wanted to say thank you to everybody involved in Heritage Day that.
We will never be the same.
Acting debuts.
Or the city will never be the same.
Todd's building calls for acting jobs, right?
Actually, if he doesn't mumble, he's out of character.
It doesn't pay well.
And thank you to Dion's group too for helping with all the setup and takedown.
That was very well attended as well.
It was, it was good. And Stacy is both relieved and sad that it was her last one.
Yeah, we may have to honor her at one point.
I was thinking that, actually.
Yeah, something.
Yeah. And then, speaking of Stacy, she asked me to let you know that we have, well, on Saturdays, I think once a month, we have movies in the library Saturday mornings. This Saturday is the Peanuts movie and we have the Charles Schultz family that were involved in making it coming and speaking at the beginning before we start the movie, so that should be cool.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Awesome.
So did anybody want to give any updates on the community development? Or Scott, do you want to, anything with community development?
I don't think there's anything to update, other than we do have a couple items coming up in October.
Okay.
In regards to some co-text amendments for St. John's properties and looking at a use, another co-text amendment for uses in the zone, so.
Okay.
I think that's where we're at.
Denise?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Wendy?
Uh, no.
This is just a little too easy. Any updates over here?
No.
Okay. Are you still in first place in the?
This is not my weekend.
No, it wasn't. I got two points last week, so. No, I went six, two and six, so. Anyway, all right. Should we go along with council or should we?
Well, if, I mean, I've got a couple of things, Tina, do you have anything? Okay. So we have in September five Tuesdays, so we won't be meeting again for three weeks. In October, our city council meetings are going to be the first and third, so seventh and twenty-first of October.
Okay.
November fourth is Election Day, we won't have a meeting that day. We are planning on meeting on November eighteenth, which would be to canvass the election and then we'll have a regular city council meeting. And then, one meeting in December, I think that's December second. So we're planning on November just one meeting and December just one meeting. Now, some of that's contingent on what comes through the pipeline, usually through the planning. If there's somebody that needs to be serviced, then we'll make sure that we get them taken care of. Just wanted to kind of work with you or let you know what the schedule looks like. The city pickleball tournament's next Tuesday, nine AM at Veterans Park. I see a few of you have signed up. And we will, it'll be a good day, a fun time with that. The Utah League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference in Salt Lake is October first and second. If you're interested in attending that, you can just get ahold of Wendy and she'll help register you for that. And then we have a ribbon cutting and, I don't know, Eric, if you want to give more details this Saturday at eight-thirty, is there anything we need to know?
No, eight-thirty, it's for us staff, eight-thirty, first watch.
So First Watch, it's a restaurant, it's over by Summit Pizza, right? Okay, I will send you an appointment for that, but it will be.
It's on there, I will, Mercedes.
Mercedes sends it, I usually resend it to you.
But if you'll send it to you, that'd be great.
They're excited, like I said, they've been meeting at the chamber for last two months, getting everything organized and so, it's all good.
Okay, that's all I have. If council, if you want to do your reports and work sessions to the council, that's up to you, if you guys are comfortable with that.
I haven't even said anything yet.
Yeah, but you're going to.
Eric Jensen, you have nothing, Todd Williams, you have nothing, Sid Lamone, do you have something?
Do you have an update on the Discovery Park courts?
Yeah, so it's, we've contacted the contractor to let him know that the work was substandard and we're waiting for them to respond to us. We're still under warranty at this point, so.
I thought we were contacting like Horox or something and?
Yeah, I mean, Horox is the engineer, but the contractors, Horox is the one that has sent the notice to the contractor with the deficiencies.
Do they have a date to respond by?
I think, I don't remember, I'd have to look at it. I want to say it's near the end of September.
Okay.
We gave them a few weeks to respond, so.
Okay.
Neil, have we heard anything yet?
They've responded and they're seeking a meeting with us.
Oh, okay.
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 Perfect.
That's where we're at.
If we do it right on the courts. Have the meeting on the courts.
Steve Rogers?
Well, yeah, one thing that I wanted to just bring up is I was hoping that, especially with some of the co-text amendments and some of the more complicated matters that come before us for resolution, if there's a way that we can get them before, the Friday before the meeting, I just, I simply don't have time to review most of those all the way through, just in the one weekend.
Yeah.
Specifically on the, specifically on the code text.
Yeah, like on zoning changes, like something that's gone through the planning committee, commission. I feel like if we could get maybe a summary of what happens at the planning commission to us earlier.
Yeah.
Like actively, I know it's there on the website, but if it could be sent out to us kind of proactively like, hey, just so you know, this matter was heard at planning commission and it is now coming before you guys, you might want to read some of the notes and reach out to the planning commission members.
Yeah.
So that we can, because, because I feel like I've done that in the past, but when we get it on a Friday because it's, we finally know it's coming on to a city council meeting, I don't have time to reach out to them and they don't have time to get back to me about their point of view. Sometimes the votes are three-two or, or they're split votes. And I like to get the dissenting votes' opinion as to why they voted the way they did. And a lot of times, I don't have that chance when it comes out so late. And then, and then we have Daniel reporting kind of this hearsay of what happened. And I would rather talk directly to the commissioners to know why they voted the way they did and what came before them. And so, things like that would be very helpful to have prior to the Friday, you know, two business days essentially before we have the.
Yeah, I think hopefully it's as simple as after the planning commission meeting, we could type up a summary and then just forward the packet that the planning commission got, which will have the details on the issue.
Yeah.
So you'll have the details on the issue and then if you have a little summary on what the planning commission, on what the vote was and how it was decided, because that usually comes out at least two weeks before it gets in front of you.
Yeah, things like that, things that deal with neighborhoods that were noticed to neighborhoods, so I can go drive through it and maybe see what they're talking about. I just, I feel like it's a really tight turnaround for me personally. I know I've talked to some other members of the council, I think we're united in this and that we would, we would really like those, that kind of information to come out early.
Yeah, I'll talk to Daniel, I think there's a way to do that, make sure you guys get information sooner rather than later, so that gives you time.
All right, that would be helpful, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So are, is there anything else that we can accomplish right now?
Yes, just one more thing, if we, let's have Tina introduce our item for the council meeting. We just have one item.
Wonderful.
If you'll review that with the council real quick.
Mayor Protem and council, the single item that we have on the regular agenda is a cell tower lease agreement with new singular wireless. They will be constructing a new cell tower on top of our baseball lights out at the Discovery Park, Manila Fields. And it'll, everything's similar to the ones that are already there. We do have an increased revenue, we're getting four percent per year increase rather than the two or three that they originally proposed. And four thousand dollars for entering into the contract and they had proposed a couple of thousand dollars. Just a background is, the city attorneys in Utah County have been working on getting a template for these cell tower leases because what we found is, is that the companies will try to low-ball each other and not tell us what they did for another city. So we've been keeping in contact with each other. The most recent one that was done was in Lehigh and this particular company tried to initially send us a draft of an old agreement with old numbers and old provisions in it. So we're all, we're going to use this one now as a template and keep in contact with each other as things change. If someone gets something different negotiated, we're all going to be apprised of it, which will make a better playing field for the cities.
Wonderful, thank you.
How many is that make now out there, do we know?
Three, I think.
All carriers?
Dion might know better, but I think it's three.
Three?
He's shaking his head yes with a thumbs up.
Three.
On a totally, is that?
That's it.
That's it. On a different notice, on a different topic, but still at Discovery, very impressed with the shades.
Nice touch.
They are, it's a nice, it's a nice touch. I mean, those are, those poles are impressive.
Yeah, they're never going anywhere.
No. Yeah, I, I know when we, when we paid for those, they were expensive, but the fact that how nice they are, it was well worth it, so.
All right, anything else? Okay, then we will close.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn the work session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
You're doing well, you're doing well.
We're going to stall for mayor. You're doing so well, we're going to stall. I'll have my texting.